Gentlemen.
Go on up.
Aye.
Ooh.
Welcome.
I can do it from here.
You can do it from there, alright. Discussion on the driveway permit requested Beaver Township's section, or excuse me, ten.
It's a two-mile section, so I only got road on one side. So, if you had road on two sides and your quarter was in the corner, you could have three driveways per road. Share that one in the corner, so you could have five, so I'd like to have a fourth driveway on that particular quarter. What it is, it's on the high ground, neighbors got a nice driveway across the road. Make nice white turns in another. At two hundred forty eighth street's a little bit narrow compared to some of the other roads around there. Life will go on either way, but I'd like to have it. I'll pay for it, hire the engineer's office to build it. It's on the crest of the hill, so it shouldn't need any pipe. Should be pretty simple bill. They can do it in the next four or six weeks. Happy swap.
Ben?
I looked at it with Dave, it looks like it's a half-mile section. I think the current policy that you guys have for driveway says, uh, one every thirteen hundred and twenty feet or something like that. So basically, uh, uh, two per half-mile. There's, would you say there's three there right now in the half-mile section? We're looking for a fourth. Again, I don't see a problem with it. I think we need to probably look at our driveway policy, uh, to make some alterations because anybody that comes in to request a driveway that's either wider than what our specification is or a number larger, to my knowledge, we've never turned anybody down.
Well, I see your location, so if you look at section ten and, um, along two forty street, is it?
Yeah, between where Quebec and ten would be.
Right.
My duty confirms there.
Yep, yep, yep. So, where are the driveways presently?
There's one on each property line, on each end of the quarter.
That one goes into yours, one goes into your dad's on each.
Right, yep. And that other one's kind of in the low ground, this one would be on the high ground.
One, okay, so the one that's on the low ground is...
Like across the body, for you. Are you looking at moving that? I didn't even look. Not planning on it.
So, this is basically because of the location, because of the high, higher ground? I mean, obviously, if it's low ground and it tends to be wet, you did try to stay away from that.
Well, this would be four driveways roughly equidistant along the quarter there. That third one in the middle isn't in the middle, it's offset to one side.
That's on, so it's a little bit not quite in the middle of the section, if you will. That's like Ben asked, is it, would it be reasonable to remove that one and put a driveway, even maybe a little wider one? You've got a quarter, father owns the rest, right on that division line there.
Yeah, well, ideally, it'd probably go across the eighty acre line there, right? So it would be three of them equidistant to spread, but that's not really why I want the third one anyway, because that's on a side hill going down into that low ground.
Which is where the other one is kind of located.
Yeah.
So, I mean...
I move we approve their permit request from Beaver Township, section ten, for additional driveway with Tyler Smith.
I just, I'm just questioning, because Ben made the note, if he can, you know, if there's need for two driveways or whatever, it makes sense, but if the other one, if you're just putting this, because the third one isn't quite in a good spot, does it make sense just to be rid of the thing?
Well, like I say, it's, uh, where the third one should go isn't where I want it to go.
We have a motion, let's, let's do it this way, we have a motion and a second to approve the permit now.
Now we can just...
Well, I just questioned him, you know, I want, you know, driveways to be in a reasonable spot, obviously, but does it make sense that the other ones aren't going to get used, that it should maybe be a good time to take it out?
Well, I think it all depends on the year, right? If you get another three or four free inch rainfall, then I'm probably not going to use that one that's there. But in the dry year, I'll probably use the heck out of it, so, you know, if there are four of them and they're equidistant to spread, I can't tell you, you know, which ones are going to get used in which year. It's all going to depend on the weather, so if you guys, you know, choose to approve it, the growers are paying for them anyway, so if the, if the engineer's office has time to build them, then put it in. If not, I can survive without it, you're absolutely right, but would I like to have it? I absolutely would.
My question for Ben, do you see any detriment to having this extra drive?
I, I don't, I mean, the whole reason that I guess, uh, the driveway policy came in and you guys throttled back the number of driveways that we put in per quarter or per section was basically because every one of these that you put in becomes another thing that somebody could hit if they go in the ditch.
It's a safety factor, yeah.
Right, you know, and it's a drainage factor. We had a lot of people that were coming in and they were requesting hundred, two hundred foot driveways, you know, so the new policy says anything longer than a fifty-foot driveway is owner maintained, the county doesn't maintain it anymore. You know, most of the, most of the reasons for our ordinances are basically, uh, our reaction to something that's going on in, in the county.
Yeah, I mean, we all know what happens when people hit driveways when they drive in ditches.
But we have, we have fixed that, uh, we're following the DOT's theater, the tapering, tapering the side, they're, they're a lot safer than what the, uh, the older ones were. I said, I, I don't see a problem with Tyler's, he's on a two forty eighth, it's gravel road, it's, without looking at the map, it's probably thirty, forty vehicles a day. One, one homestead on there could occupy one.
I don't see any problem either, I just, you know, the thing is, if you remove it and if you can get rid of one...
If it's used, we'd like to have that removed and, and put in another place, but it's, you know, he's saying that he does use all three.
I gotta throw something out there, Ben, through a discussion. Uh, I'd say take a look at all of his driveways, if they don't beat through the six, is it six to one or three to one?
Three to ones on gravel.
Direct them all to three to ones, I'd say, you know, put it in.
I think they're all tapered.
If they're all tapered, then you're good.
You can send Dave off.
Because it's kind of a safety issue, in my opinion, these driveways.
Whether there's one or four.
Is what happens is sometimes it gets too low with driveways.
The other thing is, it's high enough that it isn't going to need a pipe, so we don't have to worry about it plugging water, right?
Right, and, and I don't, I haven't, I haven't looked at the location, I just looked at the permit this morning quick before I came in, because I saw that Tyler was on the agenda. I haven't been out to the site location, Dave takes care of all the driveways. If Dave says it doesn't need a pipe, and he was out there with Tyler, then, you know...
Well, I think, you know, one, one thought on my end, I guess, if you want to reduce the number of driveways in the county, you have to incentivize people to get rid of them, put a bounty on them, say, you know, we'll give you a thousand dollars a driveway to pull them out. Otherwise, why do people want to pull them out? Because they're useful at some point in time to everybody.
Yeah.
We, we do have credit, uh, it's a two hundred dollar credit on a gravel road and I believe a four hundred dollar credit on a paper road, don't quote me on that, but...
There is a little incentive.
There is, there is some incentive to remove, uh, these older driveways that are only fifteen or eighteen feet wide.
But by the same token, we also get after them when they're loading trucks in a wet year, out on our gravel road, and someone has to sit out there, so I, me, I think it's washed. We, we give them the wider driveway and they can, can load their trucks, get in, either with combines with the heads and, you know...
Keep the mud off the road, too.
They'll still load on the road.
Well, that's a topic of discussion for another time. I think this one, we've discussed it enough, and I think it's, we're, it'd be good.
I can give Dave and his crew the latitude to inspect the other driveways, I'm sure they're relatively within spec, because I think they were all built by the county anyway.
Alright, fine.
So, if you guys want to look them over, that'd be great, and then we'll just open there.
So, the motion on the table is to approve, motion and a second, all the discussion we've had, I think we beat it up enough, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion carried.
On that topic too, Ben, if you think you need to bring us to the board sometime, driveway policy, we'd be happy to...
Yeah, I think we need to review the policy, I mean, it'd make it easier for, for Tyler, where he doesn't have to come in for this, and it'd make it easier for us, where we can approve them instead of having to deny them for a year to have them approved.
Okay.
So, and I think the only trouble with your credit is, you know, two hundred dollars doesn't barely buy a tire anymore.
Well, we might have to revisit that.
And we might have to revisit that, because the cost of the driveways to get built have gone up, so maybe we need to start offering a, a little bit higher incentive to remove these.
And, you know, it's not all bad, you know, we can certainly look at it, probably should for the reasons discussed, but sometimes if it gets in a gray area, appreciate the fact that folks will come in and, you know, explain it, then everybody knows right up front, you know, from, you know, from the engineering department to us, why are they doing it? And then it's, it's easily dealt with from there forward.
Most of these driveways were built for fifty to a hundred bucks back in the...
Right.
Sixty, seventy, a lot of times we take that thing for free, you know?
Yeah.
But now they're becoming a family of thousands.
And we don't want to make it that way, pretty.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, Tyler. Thank you.
So, let's see, looks like Ben, you're the next.
My next?
I think so.
Uh, we got two locations, um, one of them north of Thor, where Nels Pedersen, Nels Pedersen did their tile crossing.
Great.
And, uh...
Had them out. Yeah, it's a gravity trap there.
Did Ben know that? Ben know that?
I don't know. Uh, there's two locations, there's one location where Nels Pedersen did the tile crossing north of Thor, that we've since, uh, had them backfill with gravel and we've topped up and bladed, you know, once or twice a week. And then there's also a location on C twenty east of State's Avenue where we reset some crosspipes and we ended up cutting into the road about six feet, so it was about half of a vehicle lane. Uh, we got quotes from Blacktop Service and Ten Point to do either, uh, blacktop or concrete, and, uh, blacktop came in considerably cheaper for the quote, so...
So, when they do this patch, uh, Thor, what will the depth of that be?
Six inches.
Six?
Yep. It'll be six inch depth, we'll end up closing the road for, uh, that day that they're replacing it.
That surely should have knocked them, had enough rain, settled, it's hopefully...
It shouldn't settle when we're done, yeah.
I hope, because that thing about pushing through the windshield, you know, and...
Will slow down.
Forty mile an hour semi, and you got, I swear that, that, somebody blames it at least once a week, because they're always out there.
Mm-hmm.
But at that much traffic over there, it's just, it's catching a lot of heat.
So, you're, these are both from Blacktop, obviously, just different locations, uh, still think that that's okay versus the concrete in the long run?
Yeah, for the, uh, for the patching locations, the, like I said, the concrete was considerably higher. These are just patch locations, uh, and they're probably looking at actually getting overlaid in the next seven to ten years, so...
So, it should be adequate.
How much difference, I'm just questioning, how much difference was it because of concrete?
Concrete was about fourteen.
Double.
About double.
About double.
About double.
Alright, I'll make a motion to approve the quote from Blacktop Service for the patchy projects, seven thousand sixteen nine ninety-four.
You have a motion?
I'll second it.
And a second? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carried. And you said the one over by Thor, or Thor, the one over by Livermore that's going to come in on, you already put that in too? That's just going to be fixed right away, we aren't going to set on that boxes, or by Eric?
Uh, the one with Livermore, that one is scheduled in the project, it's got federal funding.
That's what I wanted to talk about.
They're just going to pour it when they're done.
Once they get done with the box, go over the others and end up doing, uh, I believe, eight inches of concrete for what they end up there on.
I thought that's what I remembered it.
So that's, like Bruce said, that's incorporated into it.
Yep, we'll get eighty percent funding on that from DOT, so that's why we included that patch.
I have a question for you. I'd like to jump around here. We've talked about this in the past, but when we get in a drainage district situation where it's talking about a lot of fixing, repairing, and stuff, and some of these need some dirt, so, so, doesn't the county have, what is there, if, I don't know, we talk policies and all that stuff, but what's the, the standard thing if contractors out there, eat a couple loads of dirt, finish the project?
In the past, what we've done is we've made, uh, our piles available to the drainage districts. They have to load it and haul it themselves.
The dirt's free to them, right?
Yeah, the, the dirt we have in charge, I don't think we've built back the drainage district for it.
So you said, if they say, hey, no, you might, but I'm talking to your type, you never know, it might be a load, might be two, might be half thousand, I understand, not, not like they're building a bridge type deal. You've just said, go ahead, just get the dirt.
Yeah, I mean, we've, uh, the only one that I can think of off the top of my head is one, uh, West of Hardy, where they needed, I think they needed four or five loads of dirt. They came in and I think they brought their own tractor back home and loaded their trucks and, and hauled it out there. As long as I don't have to dedicate any manpower or any equipment to it, I'm fine with donating a few loads to the drainage.
Unless it gets to some astronomical figure and you're wondering what they're doing with it all, but...
Yeah.
The other thing, I'm, I want to make sure that he donates the dirt, we don't get billed in the dirt, Jerry?
Well, I won't bring up specifically, but I have something in front of me that, uh, you know...
What do you need? I see you got Marcel written, what do you need?
It's what he's charging for, and I don't want to drag anyone through the road, I just, I just basically wanted to know, so if they say, hey, we need some dirt to finish this project, and that happens a lot.
Was that that washout over west of Bow?
Could have been.
But that, I bet he was looking for clay, because that was a pretty good water.
Well, it says dirt, it's a lot of dirt. Basically, if, you know, when it's a couple loads, go get it.
We, we haven't, yeah.
But you prefer...
I let the foreman know, that way if you see somebody digging into the dirt pile...
Well, yeah, they're going to ask ahead of time. Otherwise, you prefer they have their own means of loading it.
If we got to dedicate any kind of resources, I need, I need to charge for anybody.
Because you never know what their situation is. I mean, they might have the truck, but they may be, you know, a number of miles away where they're hauling the dirt, and they need somebody to load it, so you're going to charge them for loading it, basically.
Right, because I'm going to have to have a guy and a machine sit there for hours long. If they've only got one truck and they need five loads of dirt, he might sit there for three quarters of the day.
No, that's fine, I just wanted to, you know, get, get an idea on this, what we're trying to do for the drainage districts, it's more drainage district thing, most reasonable cost for them to, if they do need some dirt.
Right, like I said, if it's a couple loads, it's not a problem, it turns into fifty loads.
We're going to start building something, like, you know, we're going to...
Because we do have some money invested in, in the pile of dirt, for most of the ditch, we haul it there, you know, but if it's a drainage district, it's still county.
I'm not going there, Ben.
Yeah, I got an A G's opinion, that's the other way.
But, anyway, just, that's what I wanted to know.
Yeah.
Just to have the discussion with the contractor.
Yeah, I, I look at drainage district, it's still county, you know, so, why not?
Okay.
Alright, I have a couple of, uh, that bridge over there on, uh, over on Georgia, where Nick, uh, is putting that hog site.
Mm-hmm.
I was coming back from Fort Dodge last week and the slot trucks were over there and they were going by the quarry and by Nick's house and turning on that bridge and going across that bridge to that, so, is that an embargoed bridge, is that?
I, I don't even think that one's laterated.
That's what I wondered, but...
I, I'll have to look, but I don't think that bridge is even laterated.
I don't think it is, but I guess, I'm, with hog site going to be out there, I just want to make sure that if it's questionable, that we, there's nothing posted.
Right.
So they weren't in any violation, but I just want to make sure we don't have a load of hogs turn out there some night in the middle of the night and drop through that bridge, so if it, I didn't know if it was questionable.
They could replace it.
I know they would replace it.
Pretty meat.
Yeah, no, to, to my knowledge, I'll have to look and see if it's laterated, otherwise, I know, um, our, our bridge inspections are scheduled for December, uh, again this year, and I think we have to relook at all of our bridges because of the legislation that just...
We heard about last week.
Yeah, that we heard about this past week, so...
And the other, the other thing I was going to bring up is, uh, we approved permit for that culch finisher up in section nine in Avery, and they're going to put the driveway in, but I think it was brought up here that we want to make sure that they know the elevation of the width that's going to go in there, so...
They want a hog to go off of.
Right, so that we don't have...
They got to have driveway permit, to my knowledge, they haven't filled one out yet.
Nope, I don't think they have, but I think that...
They will.
They were going to do that, but their request is, is we get a hog, so we know what the flow line will be, and we're all in the same page, we aren't chasing that rabbit again.
Usually it's pretty simple, I mean, the, you dig till you get to the clay line, um, problem is, the contractor usually showed up with just a dozer.
Yeah, and we know who that guy is, because we've talked to him.
Bruce brings up the good point, just don't want to have an issue.
Be the same on two forty eighth in Texas.
Yeah, and I haven't seen a driveway permit for that one either. I know they got silt fence around the area, but...
Yeah.
Perfect, appreciate it.
Thank you, Ben.
Thanks.
Alright, and I'm figuring it out here.
The levies? I see the mayor's here, it's really cost to live in Humboldt, isn't it?
Conservation, Sheldon Park.
If you'll share those around, Bob, thank you. Um, I didn't put on here what changed and what didn't, I just put in what the new levies were for...
I talked to him about it, I told him I don't have funding set aside for FY nineteen, but I said we were looking into it and I'm waiting to hear back from Blacktop Service as far as what they would propose.
Don't care aware of it.
Yeah, yeah, thanks.
So if you would compare it to last year's, which I can give you a copy of last year's too, if you want me to, you'll be able to compare township by township and town by town to what went up and what went down. There's always variances in there, some go up, some go down, uh, sometimes the city levy changes up or down, or the school levy up or down, or the college, um, both colleges this time went up, um, and some of the schools did, so...
Because of the vote we had, that was ours, yeah.
So, this is what we're saying our levies will be, you'll notice the townships are split, like Avery, there's an Avery-Humboldt, and Avery-Twin Rivers, and then Avery-Gilmore City, the reason for that being you have to split your school districts out, so you get the levies right for everybody. Beaver is just all in Humboldt, Corinth is all in Humboldt, Delano's split, and so on down the line. Then you get down to Vernon, and you've got not only Humboldt School District, but you've got Laverne-Iowa Lakes, Laverne-Iowa Central, and Clarion-Goldfield. So, if you didn't have all those splits just right, then some people would recharge the wrong levy rate. So, um, the total levies that are off to the left there for all the townships, and the totals for the corporations, um, and the ag lands within the towns, match back to what the certified levies were from the Iowa Department of Management. So, after I added everything all up yesterday, I checked back to make sure they matched the certifications, and they do. So, um, the total county levy, uh, which is seven point five one five two two, includes the assessor, the ag extension, and the hospital, um, they consider those part of the county levy, even though our levy is separate totaling from them. Um, for the rural area, you have to add the three dollars and ninety-five cents in there, so then it goes up to eleven, uh, dollars and forty, eleven point four six five two two. So these are the levies we'll be using, the taxes were certified to the treasurer last Tuesday, before I left for ISAC last Monday. And they should be going out this week, I would think.
You mean, we don't want to get it in mail, right?
Yeah, or you do want to get the mail, one or the other, so you make sure you get your, you get till the end of September to get them paid.
With that being said, Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the tax levy fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen as presented.
We have a motion by Carl for the tax levy for the fiscal year eighteen nineteen.
I'll second it.
And second by Dave.
And just for your information, um, the property or tax credits were all fully funded this year, the homestead, the military, elderly credit, we have in the past years had them only fully funded by the state, and sometimes the county would make a difference, and sometimes it wouldn't, but this year they're all fully funded, so...
Good.
Helps.
It helps.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carried. How about our twenty-eight E?
Gilmore City was the last one to send in their twenty-eight E agreement, um, for the continuation of the sheriff services, and the mayor signed, the clerk has signed, sheriff came in and I coffee on the sweep, I think we signed it, so, uh, set to go if you guys are okay with it.
Motion to approve it.
Motion by Dave.
Alright. Sure? Okay, I second the motion.
And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carried, that covers all of them then?
Yep, and Gilmore one too, two, ten. I did double check for you, and the union contract expires June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-one.
A little dusty memory ain't so bad.
No, it's pretty good, I didn't know, but... So, just, yeah, that's something that we got into twenty twenty then before.
And then we'll receive a notice probably from Fird if there'll be an election.
Right, that's going to be, well, it's on their shoulders as far as, just so we're aware of it.
Yep. Um, Mrs. Bruce's billing from the motel, if the rest of you remember to get a copy of your motel bill when you left after ISAC, make sure and get it signed, get it back to me, I did stop at the motel and had it put under the county credit card, so you wouldn't have to pay, but if it did charge it to your county credit card, you don't want to keep that receipt, um, otherwise it should have come across that night. Thank you, Dave.
Okay. Any other?
Any others?
I think we got through our list, I think the only way I've left is our, um, committee reports. I told Carl if you get a minute to read through the, um, conservation board meeting minutes, there's some things in there that talks about the sale and, uh, also talks about the trail bridge down here and what their recommendation was, with, if you move that bridge back to the twelve inches from where the semi hit it, and they've talked about possibly raising it, but then they think the way it looks, they decided they'd just rather not have truck traffic through there, the way it looks, so...
Something about a gravel road to where...
What's that?
Sheldon Park.
Oh, oh my gosh, Carl.
Ben told them they didn't have any money, so you're out again.
Alright.
Well, they, they want to appropriate twenty-five thousand towards it, so...
That'd be a good start, at least put some oil down, keep the gravel, and keep the dust down.
There you are. So, looks like we're...
Well, like you say, they're coming out with some new technologies that are supposed to be a fair amount cheaper, and maybe we can look at it here in the future.
Well, in September, that group that we talked to doing that over there, um, maybe if that works out, somebody can go over there and look at it, watch it.
Yeah, lunch with the guy from Saint Lu, was he from Saint Louis?
Yeah.
Pushing his product.
Sure up, Carl.
You told me not to give a report.
I did not.
Well, I went to the same meeting you guys did, except I went one day earlier and played golf for that, Ben and I and John and the guy from Van...
Well, I went to the same meetings you guys did, except I went one day earlier and played golf for that. Ben and I and John and the guy from Vanguard and Decorah, we had fun. We gave a lot of money to the scholarship people. And then we all went to ISAC the next day. We had the same discussions. Some meetings good, some bad, that's typical. One meeting I went to, I don't think anybody else was in there. If you wanna look through these, we had a legislative policy committee, and we had everybody and all the affiliates, what they're proposing for legislation next year. So if you wanna look at that, see what they're talking about on the radio, that'd be great. Other than that, nothing new. Thank you.
Uh, Tuesday the twenty-first, I had a board of adjustment meeting here on that hog site that we approved this morning. Uh, the board of adjustment, uh, they don't think they need to do hog sites anymore. They're pretty upset, so we need to talk with them a little bit. Also, we had a uh, dog pound or humane society meeting on our building and stuff. Uh, we had blueprints there from Esterville, their kennels up there. We took them and discussed it a little bit, and we're gonna take that up to the contractor and talk with him and give us some kind of a ballpark figure of what it's gonna cost to build the building.
What date was that? What day was that?
That was Tuesday.
Do you have a contractor already in mind, Greg?
One we bought the land from, he's got it, that he will build the building. Uh, other than that, uh, I was down Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday at ISAC. Your turn.
Okay. Uh, I was at the ISAC conference, uh, Wednesday through Friday. All was pretty good, and uh, that's what I had last week.
Yeah, I was down there Wednesday and Thursday, um, in the same meetings I went to. Um, the week before I didn't, didn't mention it, but I stopped at the Esterville Dog Shelter. I guess it actually isn't a dog shelter, cause there's no dogs in it.
Cat sheltered.
Cat sheltered. And uh, visited, there was a gentleman there.
There were ninety cats in it.
Oh, for the love.
Doing, doing the chores, I guess. He was a volunteer. And uh, it was a mess. There was cats everywhere.
They multiply pretty fast.
They run around?
Yeah, running loose in there. They're in the office, they're um, I mean, you turn around, there's cats, there's cats, there's cats, there's cats, there. They're everywhere. Um, that's nothing I'd wanna model, in my opinion.
What's the building?
Over ninety cats, I think they could.
They said, I asked them, how many cats? And she says, about ninety. We're way down, though. We had, we had a hundred and thirty in here a couple weeks ago.
Wow.
But it was clean. I will say, they do a nice job of keeping it clean, but it wasn't near big enough for all the cats they had. Had cats. Their uh, their uh, I think their, their, what was supposed to be their storage room was converted into sick cat room. It had crates in there full of cats. Every room that was supposed to be for another purpose was stuffed full of cats. Um, yeah. If you have, if you have room, cats will come the way it appeared.
Wow.
I don't, I don't know what their method was. I'd like to visit with the people if they're, what their method is to get rid of the cats.
Yeah, they, they reported a little bit on that. Bill was saying that the, uh, he got the blueprints, and the cats are overrun, but they're using the dog part of it to put cans, because that's how they're building it, with can money.
Yeah.
You know, throw your cans in there, and they'll, that's what they're using to build it.
They had one dog in there, and then had puppies. It was a German shepherd. One gal said it was mean, and the guy said, no, it's not mean, but, you know, all German shepherds look mean.
It was just, just dropped by all the cats it was looking at. Maybe it's that a bad attitude, cause there's so many cats in there.
Ninety cats, they'd.
But I mean, and like I said, they kept it very clean. Uh, it didn't smell bad. Um, but there was a lot of cats. There was a lot of cats, yeah. So, there, there's some things I picked up from it. One thing I did pick up, make it bigger, is there's, if you have, if you start taking, taking them, if you don't get rid of them, you're gonna be up to your ears in cat hair.
I shouldn't add this in there, but we went out to eat with the ISAC board the other night, and Lucas Bacon, lives on Acres down there, he's got twelve chickens, two roosters, two ducks, a bunch of dogs and cats. Now, he thinks it's the best thing ever been read.
I think one thing Mary does, any cat that comes in with claws, and uh, she lets them go out to farmers and meet cats, and that helps a lot. But, you know, the ones that come in and are declawed, you can't hardly turn them out to the farm, because they'll starve unless the farmer feeds them.
Well, she gets them fed and neutered and then turns them out to the farmer.
She's doing a great job on that end. Um, his wife's, but.
Ninety cats.
But I mean, after, you know, they said this room here, what used to be, was supposed to be a meet and greet, where they bring people in to show them the bed. They turned it into the kitten room. This room was supposed to be this. It was stuffed full of cat, everything they had was stuffed full of cats. So it wasn't.
Kitten room or cat house.
They didn't have any room for storage, cause they were in smaller storage rooms, returning the cat lumps. But anyway, I'm gonna go through.
Yeah. We're not building a cat house.
Alright, um, first off, I wanna, before I forget, tomorrow, ten o'clock, food pantry truck is coming, um.
I will make it.
Well, they already got another four thousand pound food coming, so I'm gonna have to look for volunteers elsewhere there, but anyway, I appreciate it. Um, all I had for the week was ISAC. I went, uh, then, see Thursday night, I ended up in Webster City for the CFR meeting. Um, we got a little update on the uh, issues with Webster County. Um, I guess they're using another facility for the time being until this audit is done. So they're in the process of waiting till all of that is done.
That doesn't affect us, though. I was gonna ask you if that's got anything to do with what Humboldt County would do.
No, we're just, I mean, one of the eight or ten people are in ten counties that are uh, involved in that. Webster County is right now just, and that was one question I asked them, was, so we get paid, we get paid for them the same, or we get charged, not get paid. We get charged the same as Webster County, Hamilton County, Wright County, and the Shelts, yes. So we're paying the same fees as what they are. Only problem is, is they got a lot more people down there that they're dealing with. On Friday morning, I went back to Eldora for juvenile detention, and, you know, unfortunately, um, with juvenile detention and uh, CFR, which deals with the drugs and alcohol, um, seems like we have a lot of clients, but the juvenile detention in the summer, their numbers always drop. And so the good news was, is their numbers were down. We didn't have, uh, but uh, Tony said, unfortunately, when the weather starts changing, suddenly the atmosphere is there, they start bulging at the seams again, so.
I wonder why that is.
You don't, uh.
Summertime, they're a little more occupied, you can't really control them.
Yeah. Then on the way back through, um, I stopped in Fort Dodge. They had a walk-through, uh, for the CFR, so we got to walk through the facility. It's a big building. Um, I told them, you guys got a lot of wood in here that still needs to cover that, the backside, hasn't even got the trusses on yet, so. They're hopefully gonna have a crew, or two crews, starting this week, trying to get that back half covered. Um, they got windows in the front side, really looks nice. I think that it's gonna be an awesome facility when they get it put together. Uh, it's gonna make, uh, hopefully huge pathways for moving three facilities in Fort Dodge into their one roof for, for uh, them, all of us.
Do they eventually have some beds for sheriff to deliver mental health patients?
Well, um, possibly. There's a potential, but it, it all depends what the, how the mental health issues fall out with the rest of, you know, the different counties. I know that Webster County has taken some people, some clients down to uh, different facilities because of the fact that they're differences with CFR, so right now we're, but they're still running. Numbers are still good there, so. Anyway, that was the, and the other thing I was gonna bring up was, uh, we had, all had the opportunity, we got to be down in Des Moines when Harlan got his award, um, for, what was it, twenty plus years of his service. I got a kick out of his uh, speech when, when he said he moved after getting done here in Humboldt, he moved to Marcus to follow his, you know, children and grandchildren. Then he was approached to run for mayor, and what was his comment? What's a seventy, seventy-three or seventy-five year old man wanna run for mayor for? Well, guess who's mayor? That was the way he ended up, is guess who's mayor? So, he's now the mayor. We all got our pictures taken with him, so he got the golden eagle, which is a pretty uh, neat award for, for his service that he provided, not only for Humboldt County, but for the, basically the state. And did a lot of stuff in, in uh, out in the federal area too, so we appreciate it, and, and we all got the opportunity to congratulate, uh, him and his wife and his daughter, right?
His daughters are awesome.
So, yeah, it was a nice, nice award, kind of a, a nice pat on the back for Humboldt County, so with that, I guess, I think we've covered most of it. So, Peggy, do you have anything else?
No.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. Second and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign. We're out at ten.